Our gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful we could come before you this day. We're grateful for the opportunity we have as councillors to meet and be able to discuss the items on the agenda, help us that we may be able to be wise and make good decisions on behalf of the town. We're grateful for all we have and bless those that are in the cold that they will be kept warm. We're thankful for all these things and we say them humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, so today is the fourteenth day of January and we are having our regular town council meeting. It's five o'clock almost, so we're going to call a meeting to order. And you have an addition to the agenda that was presented to you, so we're going to put it down to seven G.
Brownlee?
That's Brownlee. I don't have any other additions, so...
Mary, you got a vote on the addition?
Yeah.
And then the agenda?
Thank you for the reminder. Very good.
Motion to allow Brownlee to be added to the agenda?
Thank you. Are in favor? Thank you. So now we need a regular motion to approve the agenda. Thank you.
Move to approve the agenda with the added addition there?
Okay, we already approved them. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So we are very fortunate to have Glenda and Jeff, there we go, here from STARS and they are going to present their report to us. So you can come to the pulpit.
I'll make sure this worked five minutes ago. We'll see if it works now. The odds are sometimes slim. We'll find out. Yeah, I ran through it up and down and everything worked.
Yes.
They have all this on their computers too, so if something happens, they can all...
Yeah, so councillors, you have everything all on paper or on your computer?
Yep.
And you have the stats given by STARS and you will see their range of influence and support that they're getting from towns and villages and districts?
Well, we can start, I brought a hard copy as well while he's trying to get the projector going and then we can just continue on if it does come up. Does that work?
Yep.
Sure, I think it's too cold for that to come.
(laughing).
It's a little bit on a frozen side today.
Yes, absolutely. So, we're very pleased to be here and to bring you another update as well. We really appreciate time with council. So, my name is Glenda Farnin. I'm the Senior Municipal Relations Liaison for Alberta and BC, so I work with all the municipalities within those two provinces.
And Jeff Morris, Provincial Director for STARS Operations.
So we'll start with budget as usual. So I brought this information to you last year as well, so let's just start with on the expenditure side, the right-hand side. So pretty much status quo for us, that about three-quarters of all expenditures are aviation and medical components. Smaller pieces continue to be base operations, dispatch, as well as our administration costs. For the third year in a row, we are still at 15 percent. CRA allows up to 35 percent, so we feel we are very much doing our due diligence to keep that in check. On the funding side now, not much has changed there with the exception of a couple of things. We are still in a 10-year affiliation agreement with Alberta Health Services for government funding of STARS, which is due to expire April of this year. So we are very much in high-level discussions as to hopeful to be able to renew that agreement. In the meantime, this past year, Alberta Health Services, rather than the block funding of 20 percent for that 10-year affiliation agreement, or equal to ...trend will continue and we can have a sellout because that is our single largest funding source. Calendar campaign, now that seems to hold its own, anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million a year it generates. People still want to support, they want to read those patient stories, so that's an important aspect as well. And then side registration program, again, largely used by industry, it's been down the last few years, but rightfully so. You know, they have, industry of all levels has seen a lot of challenges, but we are hopeful that it's going to be up and coming in the next few years. So in the meantime, still needing to generate over $20 million per year in fundraising is not an easy task to do when you're trying to support three bases in Alberta. So this is a part of the rural municipal initiative program that we have, where all municipalities are coming together to show support. Support not only for their area and the missions that happen in their area, but support across the province, because we all travel. We all go to, you know, neighboring communities and they come through, Cardston County and area as well. So everything that you see that's green is showing a rural municipal supporter of the municipal initiative, either giving on a per capita basis or giving a dollar value that they have now put into their emergency protective services budget, recognizing STARS as an asset of their emergency protective services for their residents. So currently we have approximately 90 percent of all rural municipalities, plus seven districts in northeastern BC, as well commitments ranging anywhere from $2 per capita up to $90 per capita and everything in between. So currently collectively rural municipalities are now generating collectively $1.8 million annually for sustainability of STARS operations. So that's just helping to offset the costs of missions throughout Alberta and in northeastern BC. Seven municipalities have reached local recognition status, they are listed there. What was brand new for this last year was in July, Rockview County also reached local status. So they have now reached the monumental level and they had local recognition for them. Next please. So on the rural municipal initiative...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. So on that, as far as urbans, we have seen, heard from a lot more urban municipalities that are saying, "We want to partner, we want to show that we are supportive as well for not only missions in our area, but throughout our region." So we have welcomed seven new communities this past year, but in addition now where you see these little circles with the stars, so these are areas where the rural municipality has now partnered along with all their towns and villages within their boundaries and they are all collectively, we are a united effort to help sustain STARS operations. Next please. So here's the statistics within Cardston County itself. So including county Cardston Initiative Facility, it's really important to remember that missions, you know, especially scene calls, like maybe you can speak to that on the 45 minutes?
Sure, I think we will. We've seen the last few years working with other health services and looking for patient care efficiencies in the system and timeliness to get, timeliness and access for patients is, there's been a general rule, if you will, within EMS is, if you're within 45 minutes of a hospital tertiary care center, I wouldn't say don't call STARS or ask for air ambulance, but it is a, it is a high-risk, high-risk operation. So the mandate's always been, if you're on an ambulance, you have a sick patient, you're within 45 minutes of a hospital tertiary care center, go. So you'll see some upcoming slides, we're actually even in here, a lot of the calls in this southern area come out of Lethbridge with their seconds, I think the second most, the second highest mission volume for inter-facility transfers. And that's not to say that all from Lethbridge, but surrounding areas and counties that have that support, because it's, from here, it's much easier to get into Lethbridge and us follow, you want to get into access for, you want the patients to have access to a physician. That's ultimately the best care you ever do. I've been a paramedic for 20 years and I wouldn't take a physician over me any day. I'm just a... So I think the importance here is to really understand what that means in terms of call volumes when it comes to inter-facility. Seeing for a helicopter to arrive 45 minutes later, when you can be in the care position and then we work, if they need to, go into a larger tertiary care center like Calgary or Edmonton and then everything else.
So currently, like, you know, we've seen a lot of up-down, you can see, so if you took an overall average, we're seeing about six missions per year within that immediate area. So it's been, you know, as high as 10, as low as one, so everything kind of in between. Meantime, too, for the bus, two years ago in January, we were here, we did bring the training bus to the Cardston Hospital and spent a day to bring critical care and share and the human patient simulator to be able to work with your physicians and nurses here at your hospital.
We also just came in October, if you didn't know, to do landing zone training with fire department and local first responders as well.
So now this gives you an idea, we're looking not specifically to your immediate area, but as I said, we all travel, we all commute, we go to neighboring municipalities, they come through yours. So now we're seeing in our neighborhood, your neighboring municipalities, in the exact same timeframe, a significant difference in the amount of call volume. These are missions where we have actually carried the patient. So now it's up to almost 800 missions in the exact same timeframe. And again, pointing to Lethbridge IFT, so this is Lethbridge Hospital, where again, when Jeff talked about the timeframe and using, utilizing ground ambulance within a 45-minute window, they go to the Lethbridge Hospital and then we are called in to take that patient to a higher level of care.
And Glenda, you got Lethbridge County here as almost one or two. Wouldn't they count the Lethbridge Hospital or regional?
These are just actual scene calls within Lethbridge County, so...
So Coldale area?
That's right. Anything that was scene called, that we were actually dispatched to the scene to pick up the patient, which is why, again, with that 45-minute window for ground ambulance, that's why Lethbridge IFTs are so high, because there'll be a significant amount of all of those that would have gone in from a scene call to the Lethbridge Hospital and now we're called in. So they're classified for us that it's a Lethbridge inter-facility transfer, although generated from a scene call.
And those could be limited, like a lot of times we'll go to a scene further south if there's roads blocked, or there's some impudence in traffic, or there's patient extrication required. But notably, if you can get to a patient, get him out and start treatment and get him to the hospital, that's best for the patient.
Okay. So last year, we brought you some information that we are looking to the future, that we are in the middle of a capital, very significant capital campaign as far as to replace the fleet. And our aging fleet is now 34 years old and what really pushed our hand was the fact that they've been phased out of production. So we no longer have the opportunity to get parts. So it really did force us to have a capital campaign. So this is the difference, just to show you a little bit, between the BK that's on the tarmac that is currently what we still use and search your area, as opposed to the brand-new two, you can see the difference in the tail, it's a H145. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the H145, just some specifications?
Sure. As far as the H145 versus the BK 117 sounds completely different, they're not. It's actually the same company and they're really cousins of each other. The biggest difference with going with the H145 you see on the back tail is it's called a Fenestron. So a Fenestron is just a closed tail rotor, so it's much safer. It reduces noise, it helps with maneuverability a lot better than, you'll see the BK with just the open rotor in the back. We haven't had any safety issues at all, but of course, just being that organization, we're always looking for safety. The notable difference within this new aircraft is not only it's the BK being a legacy machine, no parts production. Right now, we're actually, there's been times we're searching parts worldwide and the BK is actually not serviceable for sometimes days on end. So thank Christ, we have another, another machine. And the beauty with the H145 is they call it a glass cockpit, so it's much updated technology, a lot safer, a lot more redundancies built in for pilot navigation and safety.
And this is a sneak peek of the new medical interior as well, so we'll have Jeff just give us a little...
If you haven't seen previous, it's relatively the same material. I mean, that's, that's one of the biggest things within specialized critical care and just in the critical care air services that we, air and medical services we provide. You really want that standardization. You don't want things a lot different. So functionality that's different here, if you haven't seen the back of the BK compared to the back 145, it's same equipment, just a little bit different. You'll see this little thing called a bridge with that, is this about a pointer?
Pointer?
See this little thing? It's a little table. It's not for food. It's a, it's a bridge, just previously we'd have things just kind of hanging over the patient here and there, so it's a little intrusive. So this, this allows the practitioners to have better access to what's going on with the patient, takes the equipment off the patient. You'll see here on the, on the right-hand side of your screen, these little things, they're, they're IV pumps. So historically, we've always had what's called a triple-channel pump. It's right there. We had a triple-channel pump, so you could put three, three separate IV lines, whether it's epinephrine, saline and something else, you could put three different medications to line through. But the tough part with that is if one of the channels broke, the system was broken. So it was a lot of manual stuff. So we've gone to single-channel pumps. Certainly we still, we've got our ventilators on there, we've got our ultrasounds, we carry two units of blood, it's still the same, if you can believe it, actually, I don't even know if you know this, but Saskatchewan physicians in the province are working on having more blood on the aircraft. So that's probably coming down the pipe for us within the next year or two. That's been in discussion. So just a lot of the same equipment and the biggest best thing is that we actually have good 360 access to the patient. There's a lot more maneuverability, the chairs actually have track systems and swivel systems. So instead of just sitting on the bench, a lot of times you couldn't get to, say, the knee of the patient, but now you can actually slide down and have access and better patient care ability.
So here we are at the fleet renewal campaign as it continues. So originally, just talking for the helicopters itself, nine to serve Western Canada was an equal to just talking helicopters, $117 million, $13 million per helicopter. So where we stand now, Saskatchewan government has pledged that they are paying for one of the three that go to Saskatchewan. Alberta government has pledged they will pay for one that will come of the five that we are required in Alberta. So three, one in each base, Grand Prairie, Edmonton and Calgary, and two backups to rotate between those three bases. And federal government now has recognized STARS not as a provincial service, but the fact that we are serving Western Canada, from Manitoba across and Eastern BC. So now they have made a grant for $65 million to pay for five of the nine. So now what remains is we still need to fundraise for two of the helicopters, plus additional training, that's a very expensive two-year training program for all pilots at base. We have two bases left to go. Full pilot coverage to cover those bases while, you know, the pilots are away for training, additional tools that go with this particular type of model of helicopter, as well as the ground control equipment. So in total, we are still looking at a $35 million capital campaign remaining. So that's where, you know, the municipal initiative program is very much, it's vital because it helps us to continue to have sustainability for operations, while we are also trying to generate an additional $35 million for the remaining helicopters. So May of this last year, we took delivery of helicopter number one and two, and in July it became operational out of Calgary base. And the number two helicopters continue to be doing training for a lot of the other bases. In September, number three arrived in Saskatchewan. We have already placed the order for number four, five and six, which we expect delivery sometime between mid and end of 2021. And we are currently placing the delivery for number seven, eight and nine, hoping that by end of 2022, when we expect delivery, that we have also completed the $35 million capital campaign. So we want to thank you very much again. We thank, we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you, to enhance the fact that, you know, your commitment to safety for your residents, as well as for your bordering neighbors. It's very much a united effort as I showed you on the map that, you know, across the entire province and even into BC, we're having, you know, they, they recognize that STARS is the only life resource available to them, and so they are also supportive of this municipal initiative. So we would like to ask you for your kind consideration to join your municipal neighbors in partnership. So I'm asking you to please consider a $2 per capita contribution annually to be a part of this municipal initiative as we go forward and as more and more communities come together, not only for those circles, joining with their surrounding rural counties and MDs, but also with the municipal neighbors as well as that expands and we really are uniting in order to continue to have the sustainability that STARS requires. The $2 per capita contribution that we're asking you for is equal to approximately one mission per year as far as, you know, what, what we can achieve. It just helps to offset those costs. And, you know, considerations given as well, I, I presented to your county yesterday as well, they have been supporter of STARS since 1991. They are a part of this municipal initiative and actually moving towards looking at putting their annual contribution into their protective services budgets as well. So I ask for your consideration. Together, we can continue to fight for life. And in closing, I just want to say that we have all seen in the statistics and in the thousands and thousands of lives that have been changed, partnerships do save lives. So we are asking for your kind consideration to be a part of STARS. And we thank you for your time and to give you further information this year.
Thank you so much, Glenda. Jeff? Go ahead.
Glenda, I noticed that you only have the rotary aircraft. Do you have any fixed wing in your operation?
We are strictly, we are strictly helicopter.
But Alberta Health has fixed wing?
That's correct.
Alberta Health Services has nine locations for nine.
Now, do they, do they also have helicopters?
No.
Then there is somebody else that's operating a rescue service, helicopters?
There's ELO in the southeastern area and HERO in Fort Mac area.
And there's Delta North and there's Alpine Rescue out of, like, Katonaskis mountain areas.
And their funding is similar to yours or...
They do, they do fundraising, like Glenda alluded to before. Alberta Health Services, they gave us $2 million in their, we have an affiliation agreement and there's not an affiliation agreement for rescue helicopters. At the time, we got a $2 million grant. The other helicopter agencies also got a million dollar grant. So that's what Alberta Health Services, I'm sure you've seen the initiative, the HEM review that's being put on right now. So that'll be, that'll be forthcoming here probably by summer.
Thank you very much, and we will consider your asking.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time as well.
All right, council, we have minutes from the December 10th meeting, regular meeting of council that needs approval. Councilor Brown, make a motion to approve the minutes of December 10, 2018. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so the next item of business is the bylaw and policy section, and we are going to deal first of all with the land sale policy. I don't know if Noran you want to come. Thank you for being here, I appreciate your presence and to help us understand the changes that have been made.
Okay, so we've been working on this policy for quite a while. We had to lawyer look at the policy and the land purchase agreement and the second part of the land purchase agreement, which is the option to reacquire the land. So there's a lot of policies and stuff that go together here. The land, the policy for land sales is basically our document that we use in the office to control what we put into the land sales or the purchase agreement and the reacquire agreement. So the land sales policy, the mayor's gone over it, the chairman and I have gone over it. If you guys got your document prior to Friday, it's already rolled. We've already made a whole bunch of changes to it, grammar, words, wording, stuff like that. So the newest document, I don't know if you got a copy of it or not, but I'll just go over it really quick.
We got something in front of us.
It's basically the same. If you got it, we, if you're getting it off the cloud today, we just put it up there about quarters.
There were errors and all that and, I mean, it has been reviewed by the office, by myself, by the law.
We did a lot of review on Monday. You brought errors today that we'd already changed on Monday, but you had some other ones that we fixed too. So the policy basically is in three different sections. The first section is on residential lots. And so the first part, it talks about the, if the purchaser doesn't follow the policy, then the town can reacquire the land. And it tells you the refund purchase price of the land will be the purchase price less 10 percent. If the person who purchased the property wants to keep the property and wants to still move ahead with his development, there is the option of doing an annual fee of $3,000 if nothing's been done yet, or a $10,000 annual fee if construction's already started on the property. Now, for any of these fees, annual fees that we put on there in each one of the different types of lots, you guys are going to talk about what Kelsey Becker, our lawyer, says in camera later on about those fees. There, you'll talk about that, so we won't even get into that right now. So the residential one says the person has one year to commence construction and two years to complete construction. If it doesn't follow that policy, then it can fall back to us either repurchasing the land or tack the fee onto the land. Anytime that they purchase the land, residential land, there's a either $1,000 deposit put down when they first start discussing it and if it's over five, over $100,000, it's 5 percent. So it's a deposit. Deposit is non-repayable.
Just a quick question, what residential land do we actually have? Is that a stubble deal?
We have the 2A and then we have a couple odd lots around town.
So we don't have a lot then?
We do not have a lot of residential land though.
Outside of the Scottville?
Probably 10 or 15.
That's including Scottville?
That's including Scottville. Okay, um, the commercial and industrial is a little bit different because the refund, if we repurchase land, it's only 5 percent, because normally commercial or industrial land is way more money. And 5 percent of $150,000 is like $7,500 is quite a bit, so that's why that's down. The, if they want to keep it and continue, the annual fee is $5,000 and then if construction's started, the fee is $10,000, which is pretty much the same. In the commercial, there is not a one-year, two-year policy. There is that the purchaser must commit, commence construction and complete construction according to the timeline that is approved by the town council. Sometimes commercial construction can take five years to build something. I mean, that would be a huge project, but that is why it doesn't say one or two years, it says whatever is agreed to by council prior to the agreement being signed. Yes.
So in the past, when they haven't been able to fulfill their obligation, but they still want to build their, we've just referred it to council and give them a little more time? We haven't penalized them?
We haven't penalized them.
This will penalize them?
It possibly can, yes. Okay, the non-repayable deposit for commercial is 10 percent of the property instead of the $1,000 and 5 percent. And then in the raw land, all raw land sales must be approved by council prior to doing them. We can sell a Scottville lot without talking to council, we know how much it is, we've gone through all that, but our piece of raw land is a lot more involved. So council... So council must approve raw land sales. Uh, the development timeline must be approved by council also. Same as in construction of commercial stuff. Um, if we, if, if it comes to the point that we, they don't follow the rules, we take it back, it's the purchase price minus 5%. Um, if they want to continue, we can tack on a $5,000 annual fee or a $10,000 annual fee to any other construction started. And then on the commercial, the non-refundable deposit is 10%. All of the non-refundable do come out of the purchase price. But if they back out after going through it all, it's, they don't get money back. And then the only other thing in the property or in the policy is the residential property trade. So if somebody wants to buy a lot and they start the process and then they decide, hey, you got a better one over here, the town could possibly, at its own discretion, I guess, decide to trade them, but we would stick on a $200 transaction fee under the possibility of changing all the paperwork that affects them. So that is basically the policy. That's what directs the town employees. And then, um, I guess the sales agreement is where all of the T papers are put into the, put into it. This was actually mostly written by our lawyer. So there's a lot of legal terms in here. It's a little hard to read in some places. But it does, it starts off with the first number three is the building commitment. It talks about the one-year or two-year development. And then if the vendor doesn't complete those things, we have the option to reacquire the land. So when we do the purchase and sales agreement, they also have to sign the, uh, just back in the back there. The option to reacquire agreement. So just back into the purchase and sales agreement. If you turn to number, um, I guess three, G and H. D just talks about the purchase price and the purchaser will get it back plus 10%. That's if it's a commercial property. If it was residential, we change that to be 5% or whatever fits the, the land sales policy. So G is one of the options we have and H is the other option that we have. G is taking a performance bond. Every time that somebody wants to purchase a piece of property, we take a performance bond for $30,000. If they didn't follow the agreement and didn't get it developed in time, they could have the option to continue on and we would take the 3,000 or the 5,000 out of that every year until the time that they were finished. And then we turn the rest to them. The other way is just to tack on the, the 3,000 or the 10,000 each year. Kelsey talks about that in her letter that you're going to discuss at the end. So one of the decisions we have to make is which one of those we want in there or if we want to use them both as an option depending on what type of purchase it is and if the purchaser has no money or the purchaser has one. Because a $30,000 performance or security bond could stop a sales. And if it's just going to be a single family dwelling, it might not be necessary. So that's one of the ones that can change in and out. Uh, if you flip over to.
No, I have a question.
Yep.
What percentage of people, when they're buying a lot, just kind of do it on speculation and put a deposit on as opposed to just buying it outright? Because they want that lot.
Most of the time, people will come in here and they'll start talking to us about a lot and they want the lot, but they haven't got, they, they haven't got their financial setup or the bank has to come up with something, so they'll put a deposit out. And then they'll have either 60 or 90 days to come up with the remainder amount. In the old policy, it used to say that they had to pay it off either within 60 or 90 days or prior to development permit. This says within 90 days, I believe. But if they could do it sooner, we would take it sooner and then we leave the development permit once it was paid for and the time was transferred.
Thank you.
Okay, if you flip over to six D, uh, you'll see some highlighted boxes there. And then underneath, I don't know if you guys have any card, but there's some, there's two paragraphs that are red. So the highlighted paragraphs are in there for commercial businesses, corporations, that type of stuff. And if it's an individual purchasing it, we've removed the highlights and put the red in because there, there's little different rules and regulations for individuals and corporations. Same thing in seven B. If it's an individual, we actually just remove a bunch of the paragraphs because they don't, not necessarily to be in there. And then if you look at B5, it says duly executed development agreement in a form acceptable to the vendor and the purchaser should say, and it should also say their schedule C, which it does among you guys, but it will when it's finished. The rest is just basically talking about goods and service tax serviceability timelines, all that kind of stuff going to the confidentiality. And then the last part is the option to reacquire. The option to reacquire talks about the one and two years. It was a important thing, we just swapped that out. This has to be signed along with the main of all three agreements just because the sales agreement, the option to reacquire and the development agreement prior to the land being transferred. It just basically tells us the, I guess, uh, way we take and taking land back if we do go that route. And then the very last part is the schedule three, which is just terms and conditions of the re-acquisition of some of the land. It's just basically talks about the value that you give back and that type of stuff. The first question. Any other questions?
Go ahead.
So what I'd like to do with Council, okay, is if we can just have a little bit of discussion at the end of the closed session. Council, uh, you would approve, if you want to tonight or not, it's fine. You would approve the policy. The agreements can be left with us to, to do up. The policy needs to require your approval and then we would get all the associated agreements done up for those. But we can have that discussion later. There is some risk in any of these agreements. We just want to make sure we flush that out thoroughly and have that discussion later tonight.
You've thought that, right?
I do, yes. Yep.
So essentially, Council will discuss later on those different options that are presented there.
The chances of actually having an option for it.
Okay, all right. So we will talk about that. And at this point, you have, and as you said, you have three elements to that, to that document, the first one being the policy itself.
Right.
So we could approve the policy itself without approving the other documents at this point. Is that correct?
So my opinion is you would simply approve the policy and then we would make sure we had the appropriate agreements and documents to accompany it. But that would be left us to.
All right, okay. So, no, no, because there's, there's nothing to discuss in that closed session on that first document. Okay, all right. So we can approve this policy subject to changes in the agenda in the agreement of purchase. So we finalize later on, right? Okay, so Council, it's up to you.
I'd make a motion when we accept the draft policy L dash 10 dash 2 policy for land sale, subject to further reviews and changes that may occur. Do you come for reserving that until after the closed session? Just if anything comes up there?
Do you want to approve the whole today with the whole package after we finish the closed session?
I, I'd like to have a discussion in our closed session. We'll decide that we like policy in the closed session.
I'll lose you on my end.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to know how you wanted to operate. All right, so that's fair enough. Thank you, Noron, for your presentation.
Just to make sure we can continue the performance of cash.
So let's see, those things that I, thank you so much. Thanks. All right, so we'll keep it for later on. Thank you, Council. So the next one is the draft policy R87, the remuneration of council. There's a reviewer of amendment. And to tell you the truth, after I reviewed that policy one more time, I reread everything, I still have some questions regarding some items. And because, because I still have questions, I'm sure you do have also some questions. And I really honestly believe that in discussing with you that prefer, the preferred way to present that policy would be in a table form where you would have the different remuneration that are coming to Council monthly. It doesn't change anything we have done. It's just, as Counselor Self told me the other day, it's an antiquated policy that needs a serious, a serious review. And I believe it's not far from the truth. We have amended it and fixed it and refixed it and fixed it so many times. That is not as clear in the interpretation of it anymore and it was not before. So here are the few things that we need to really come to clarify, for me anyways. So if you don't mind, I know getting a little bit of my presentation, maybe then we can make the proper changes in the last version and hopefully get it right. So there's, there's two paragraphs there that were added and highlighted and is on the 2A1 and 2A2. And those are the one that maybe cause me a little bit of confusion still. So when we said that, so the way I understand it is the amount is intended to cover the preparation so that the basic annual allowance that is now going to be paid monthly, okay? So this amount is intended to cover the preparation and attendance at assigned committee meetings. We have no problem with that. We understand that. The council shall by resolution approve the list of committees that we do at every organization meeting. That's not a problem. I thought we need to add something to the effect that depending on the assigned committee meeting to be occurred once monthly, once quarterly, once semi-annually or annually. Okay, so.
Say that again. I can call you.
In every, in every assignment that is given to you, you have some meetings that are monthly, some that are maybe quarterly, some that may be semi-annual or some of those that are annual in what you give it, right? Fair enough? Makes sense? Okay. So here is where I have a question. We have decided that for any assigned committee that meet monthly for more than four hours or more than once per month, there will be supplementary compensation given. Are we clear on this one?
I have to.
Yeah, so that's okay. So it's more than four hours, you do that. But also for the monthly meeting. What I'm not sure that we discussed is what happened if a quarterly meeting or semi-annual or annual, out of a sun, is a meeting that goes over four hours? Because it's only such a small amount of time in a year. What do we do with this one?
Mayor, I said.
So that we can fix it.
I sat all weekend in this policy and it gives me a pain where I can't go. And what it is, is we've got committees that meet monthly. We don't have an agenda. They're, they're just meeting to meet.
Yeah, but.
And, and, and we go on and, and here we've got all this time spent on, on allocations and per diem and all that kind of stuff. I don't think we need it because, because our committees are, are structured totally different. ORSC, for instance, goes quarterly and they get everything covered in a quarterly meeting and they have a big agenda.
Is that less than four hours, you're telling me?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Now, why do we have committees that meet every month and talk about the same bloody thing over and over again? And, uh, and in my situation, I'll, I'll tell you the situation. I had my knee replaced. So I missed, I missed a council meeting, a C C W meeting. I also missed one of my committee meetings, which is the airport committee. Really super impressive. And so am I going to get docked for that?
No.
Okay.
No, but.
It says in here that I, to report that I missed a committee meeting and I had also missed a council meeting.
Yeah, so this is why, this is why that all, that goes back to what Counselor Court had mentioned. When you have a loss in your family, what's happened? And you miss a meeting or you miss two meetings, what happened then? Should you be docked or do you miss it now? So it goes back to the same kind of principle. So it's not indicated properly in the policy. So that's maybe another issue that needs to be kind of taken. Your, your committee meeting absolutely does not deal, we're not being impacted because it's on a annual basis. So that you have not been present at that committee meeting is going to be a miss in information, but not a miss to you on your allocation. The only difference is for the, for the meetings that are regular meeting of council, there should be somewhere a, um, an exception that is made. If that's what you want, you have to discuss it. If you are not present because of a death or because of a, a, a health issue, should you be docked? That's the question. And in, in general, there are many policies that normally cover you for those type of things, right? Counselor Self.
For health work, other than issues. If I'm down in the weeds, you want to get a snare, like, have a cold, I'm not going to go to the council.
And I'm glad because you're not going to infect me. Thank you. But this.
Do doctors know to prove to you that I was actually sick for that council meeting?
No, you know, I mean, let's not be foolish, but let's try to figure out. Right now, the policy is, is written. I'm just telling you what the policy says. Right now, the policy says you are at the meeting, you paid for that meeting of council, not committee meeting. Is that appropriate? You have to make the decision now.
I, I, I really, I mean, I, I understand Counselor Court's dilemma and I wholeheartedly agree with him on that. And when you've got surgery, that's a serious health issue. I think that those things are exceptions, right? And I don't think a person should be docked for that. If a person is, I mean, there's all kinds of things. I get, Counselor Self is the same. You know, if you're, if you got a cold, you know, some people, everybody's cold is different than the other. But if a person definitely sick, they got influenza or something like that, they're sick, they shouldn't be here, shouldn't be here. And I think that's an exception too. So we need to, we really need to tighten it up so that we're not, you know, being punitive because a person can't be there in attendance at that meeting. I think that.
No, but this is, I bring it up.
Yes. Yes, and we should.
Because if we don't bring it up, we're always going to be asking those questions and be frustrated. So I want to take the frustrations off once and for all.
I gotta throw another ball right there.
Well, I like that.
So councillor Brown goes to Edmonton for a meeting and decides.
And she misses a meeting.
Yeah, she misses a meeting, but she wants to be tapped in through Christ Time or whatever. Is that being attending at the meeting or not?
Well, to me, it's a former attendance.
Oh, sure it is. Absolutely. If it wasn't her fault that we had some difficulties with transmission and stuff like that, in my opinion, she was here, and I was happy that she did that.
You know, we, there are other committees that have attendance through electronics. But it's not the case of, of them, after now.
With illnesses, et cetera, et cetera, there's gonna be a bit of a trust factor involved here. You know, if you're gonna get a council or not, if you're deathly sick and you're gonna spread the flu by their way, we don't want it here. If you have a little bit of a cold, you probably be able to get here. But again, I don't know. You're going into the weeds here. I don't know what you're talking about here. But most of us have here rather than to feel like took that grades, we come anyhow.
Okay.
But there's, there's that trust factor, but then again, you're.
Alright.
Birth looking councillor, birth like.
This is number two, right?
Mayor, I feel that we are, are getting involved in this like councillors do. Just for transparency for the odd citizen who wants to know
No.
why we're paying so much for our council, so much.
Honestly, I really don't, I really don't believe that that is. I, I don't really, honestly don't believe that that is right. If you want to have peace in anything you do at a council table, have proper policies. And proper policies mean that you need to have a fair amount of clarification. And Jeff can maybe add this to it.
No, I just, the mayor sent me her dissertation on our thoughts on the policy today. And so, it was, it was nearing the same length as the policy, so we had, we had some.
I have a page. Don't bother.
But, but honestly, I think with this policy, we're all so far down the rabbit hole on this thing.
Yeah.
Right? That we're, we're starting to try and manipulate all this minutia, which is important, but there's a part of me, and what I told mayor, and I'll leave it with you to discuss, is let's take a step back, and let's just rewrite it from scratch and stop trying to amend. I think that's part of the problem. And I was curious if you would want to refer this to the policy review committee? Just for a rewrite, which means councillor Brown and councillor Bengry, I believe, but.
You're right.
But I just wondered if we wanted to take a step back and just, you know, start over with this thing a little bit? Because I fear we're getting it, like I said, really.
Well, I really honestly feel that.
We might be. We might just need to sit back and say, what are the key points? We need to out here write it from scratch and see what we have at the end of that.
I really think that it has been amended way too many times, and at the end of the day, we don't understand it the same way from, we seven, and I bet you we have seven interpretations, which tell me.
Absolutely. We don't all agree on it. We don't all understand it the same way.
And this is why it needs some clarification, honestly. It's.
The point that, what councillor, councillor Court has brought up, it's a trust factor too, you know? There isn't one person around this table that's gonna say, you know what, I just don't feel like going. But I'm gonna make up the excuse for not going, so I can be paid, you know? That's not gonna happen. The person isn't gonna be here. They're gonna have a very valid reason for not being there.
This council might feel that way. I don't know about the future.
Well, I don't know.
And you're exactly right. You don't write the policy for this council. You write it for the future.
Yeah.
Okay, you're not going to rewrite the policy every year, every four years. I'll be painful.
Yeah.
Alright, so are you comfortable asking the committee to kind of look at it and bring back something new?
If, if, if that's what this council would like, is for the policy review committee, I would say yes, because I sit on that policy, and I'd like to have points from every councillor here, so we can accumulate them and see what we can write in that policy.
Well, if you feel sending, sending your concern to administration, maybe they can collect all those things and that might, councillor South.
Just one question. How much farther are we gonna kick this football down the road? Because time is passing, meetings are passing.
No, no, it's okay.
All of us are going to meetings that we know we're never gonna compensate for, they're like seven hours long.
Okay, I can, can I, can I speak to that?
Please.
I spoke to Jeff about that and said to Jeff, here's a connection, exactly what you just said. We're still on the old policy, but you know what? We are moving, we know we are moving with the new changes, no matter what. So let's carry on, do your per diem the proper way, the way as we understood them last, okay? So in other words, if you have a meeting that lasts more than four hours, do it. Present your per diem. If you have one that are seven hours, present your per diem. And that's the way it is. We know that policy is coming in place, it's just the framework is there, but the presentation is still not, okay? So we need to fix that. Yes.
I understand what everyone sitting at this table has said. I disagree with some of it, and I approve some of it. But I honestly feel like this is being written to death. I don't, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, and I just feel like how much more? So councillor Barnes, or sorry, councillor Bengry and I are gonna sit at this, and we're gonna, we're gonna kick this a little bit more.
Not starting from the beginning.
And then, and then we're going to put in every, like, it just, I just don't think that is what's needed here. I feel like, okay, if you wanna put in what you just submitted in your biography, great. Let's go ahead and let's stick that in here. I don't understand why we have to take and reword and re, because really, that's all we're doing, is we're rewording the whole thing, when it's really just bits and pieces of it that aren't quite right? Like, why? Why? I just, I, I just don't think it needs to be done. It's my personal opinion. I just don't, stop smiling. I just don't.
No, it's quite okay. But maybe what we need to do is, maybe what needs to be done is at the end of the policy, where we have that table that shows the per diem and all that, maybe that is the element that needs to be reworked as a table, so that it becomes very clear.
Great.
Use the KISS formula.
Right? So if we can at least, if we can at least fix that, to be more inclusive of all what we have. Right now, it, it says that council remuneration only covers two category. Well, in my point of view, it carries three category. It carries the regular meetings of council, or the CCW and special meetings of council. It carries a committee meetings. And then it carries all the other meetings that we have, and the extra length meetings that are attached to our assigned committee or other committees. And so those need to be separated in three aspects. If that's put in a table under those three items, I'll be happy.
Great. Can we do that?
Good.
Can I make promotion to do that?
Submit that to Jeff and.
Ditto, to what she just said. Like, can I just?
What's your motion? What she said?
Yeah, can I make promotion?
Well, I don't even know if you need a resolution, honestly, councillor. I mean, I know, I have all of her feedback on that already.
I'm aware of that.
I mean, I'll have to get through it.
So can we not just ditto this?
No pressure, no pressure, councillor.
I'm just saying.
Okay. Councillor.
That's, we need to divine intervention. That's what we need.
See, there were yet one.
Here, hold on a second here, councillor.
Because Jeff has your thesis on this.
Oh, I can send it to all of you.
And he goes through that and, and make the policy.
Rewrite this.
Well, I mean.
I'll have another go at it.
Yeah.
But puts it on table phone. Fix the table.
Yeah, I'll have another more dramatic go at it.
Well, the, the, the review committee is gonna meet with you.
Well, that's, that's not what I'm hearing.
No, that's not what I'm hearing.
Aren't you?
No.
Alright, fair enough. Let's put it to rest. We let, we will let.
Let the professionals take it.
The professionals go care of it. Alright, let's.
You're on my.
Let's move on. Well, I just wanted to write for the future.
Yeah, no.
I think I have too much time on my hands. It was cold.
Please let that Chinook get you quick. I need you, mayor, find some indoor hobbies.
It is brighter.
I'm just working on your behalf.
Yeah, we love you.
Seven, other business. Department of Fishery and Oceans, letter of credit. Now, that is a complex story, and Jeff, if you want to kind of address the issue, it does not cost us money, but it's just a transparency issue and we need to fix it.
Yeah, and it's a, it's an ambiguous legislative compliance issue, is also what it is. So we're getting ready to do work on the creek. DFO is gonna let us work in the winter instead of the August window. It doesn't really address how you balance, you're giving, you're giving the ability for a third party to take money from you when you give them a letter of credit. But it's not a traditional borrowing by law, because we're not borrowing anything. We're just extending the ability for a third party to take money from us should they seem to need. So it's a really strange one. So we have existing lines of credit out now, or letters of credit, I should say, not lines of credit. We have those out now, and we simply just sign them by agreement with the bank. In fact, council didn't even make a resolution on the last one we did. It was five years ago or so, five or six years ago. So I went and pulled that out and looked at how we got to that point. I talked to the bank about how we got to that point. It was simply by contract. But I didn't feel like that was quite appropriate, because hypothetically, the recipient of the letter of credit can cash it in. And now I've made, in this case, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar expense without the knowledge of council. So when I worked with municipal affairs on this, I proposed to them, and what I put in the background is that what if the council made a resolution to approve a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar expense and fund it by cash we have on hand? So it's not going to affect your budget in the bottom line. So we're gonna have an expense and a, and a revenue in the budget, with the intent that it will never be drawn upon. Right? That's, that's our intent. I see no reason why we would have to have DFO draw on it. We will do the work. The other kind of irony in this is the money for, the expenses that DFO would want to draw on that for are also expenses approved under the grant. We can spend the grant money to do the things that DFO would want to do for the letter of credit. So right now, we're in the fortunate position that we have cash on hand. So we have a GIC at the credit union that covers the amount, and they need security, of course. So they're looking for security, and they're willing to use our GIC as security. And then after all this is approved, we'll be getting an advance from DRP for fifty percent of the project, which is more than enough cash to cover off this as well. So it's an interesting scenario for sure, and I think we have the right approach to it in, in adding it as an expense that is funded in the budget.
Yes.
The DFO.
Yep.
Other than granting you the permission to do this work, do they do the work? Or is the town doing the work?
So we will do the work. They come and inspect at the end of it and say, okay, because we have to, we have to specify our habitat offsets. We have to tell them, we are going to put, I think in this case, like thirteen root wads in the creek that are going to create backflow and backwaters, that will create habitat. And so they look at that now and say, yep, you have enough habitat offsets, we're gonna approve the project. But if we don't do that, they will take that letter of credit and do it.
Oh, I see.
That's what'll happen. So they'll come and inspect and say, hey, you said you're putting thirteen of these in, you did nine. We're taking fifty thousand dollars and putting the other four in.
Okay.
And, and we can't stop that. We give them that ability to do that.
Okay, so that's why we need to ensure that we follow the letter of the law and do it.
Yeah, and again, it's all grant funded. We have no motivation to skip on the project.
Right, exactly.
It's fully grant funded, hundred percent. So I just don't have any motivation to skip.
So another question before I finish. I agree with Jeff. When it says that the MGA doesn't allow for the use of letters of credit.
It doesn't accommodate it specifically. It doesn't say anywhere in the MGA that you can give a third party the ability to take cash from municipality.
Yeah.
Which is what you're doing.
That's right. If, if we do, that's what I'm saying. If it's not there, why should we give that to them, other than?
Give them a guarantee that we have the money that is there. Because DFO, when I talked to municipal affairs, I said, just as a heads up, there's probably a hundred of these out in the province, and the MGA doesn't acknowledge how you're supposed to use them. But anyone who's done project on watershed through their community has got it, including us. We have one right now, a hundred thousand for phase one, which, as an aside, once phase two starts, they're gonna release phase one.
Okay.
So that'll be fine. But, so the MGA doesn't give us the authority necessarily to just extend a line of credit, but what it does do is let you make a change to your budget and fund it by a reserve account.
Okay.
Councillor Bengry.
Jeff, when we went for this grant,
Yep.
we specified what we were gonna do in that grant. So does that not tell the DFO that, hey, this is what we're guaranteed to do for that grant money? Now, why do they want a letter of credit from us, when it's basically illegal for us to give them a line of credit?
So again, I, I don't wanna say it's illegal for us to do it. There just isn't a provision within the MGA to treat it like a borrowing. So I'll give you another scenario here. If we had no reserves, like, I don't know, hypothetically, other communities we know, if they didn't have any reserve cash, they would have to do a borrowing by law to backstop the letter of credit.
Yeah.
So then we'd have to have public hearings and have a borrowing by law, and then the bank would lend us a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, but it would only be able to sit there as security. That's all it could do. We're just in the fortunate position of having cash, so we don't have to do a borrowing by law, because you can approve it as an expense. But to your question, councillor, DFO fully believes we're going to do everything we said we would, but they still want security in case we don't.
Well, there's security as a fact that they can withdraw and withhold so much of that funding or ask for a return of that money.
They can't. So that's, as their federal entity, they don't have any fingers in the plot of the DRP money.
Oh, okay.
So though they can't manipulate that relationship.
I can see why they want that.
Yeah.
Councillor Brown.
Okay, I'm just gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to approve the expense in the twenty twenty five, the hundred and sixty-eight thousand to account two dash two four dash two three zero, disaster general. We find it from reserve account four dash and dash two zero. Major utility capital will save the maintenance fund.
We don't know.
I'm.
These expenses only will be incurred should the Department of Fishery and Oceans place a demand on a letter of credit extended to them not to exceed this accrued amount.
Okay.
Well done.
Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor? Thank you. And Max Wire Service, contra the extension. So our contract is coming to an end by the end of March or sometime like this. It's done? Alright. So we need to kind of carry on that mutual agreement, and we need to kind of do it by resolution. So we need approval of the amending agreement for wire service from NMAX Power Corporation. That's what we need. So anybody willing to do a motion?
Councillor. I move to recommend that approval of the amending agreement, the wire services from NMAX Powers Corporation. Is it a two-year agreement?
It's a two-year agreement.
For two years.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty and twenty-one.
Alright. Questions? It's a very complex piece of legislation, as you can see, and contra, I mean, it's that thick. So, all in favor? Thank you. Let's move on. February sandwich program data. As you remember, we had last year decided that as council, we would volunteer manpower ourselves and staff members. we would volunteer manpower ourselves and staff members to come and do the sandwich project, to do about a thousand seven, two hundred, thousand seven hundred sandwiches to a thousand sandwiches, depending on what I have to advise. And so, what we need to do is figure out a date. And Counselor Brown, you were mentioning that the earlier in February, the better. Is that what I said?
Yeah, I, I went and did it last week at Price and Common, and we did a thousand sandwiches, and they were, I talked to her when I was there, and that's why I submitted to Jeff so that we could try and get on the docket, get it done. I can.
It's February fifth, any good? So Wednesday, maybe?
So, I guess my question is, if we're going up to Brownlee the night before, then that's when we'd be going, because Brownlee's the sixth.
All the time, if everybody's going along.
That's my point. That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm fine with the evening, I'm okay.
The third?
Well, we may, but not that time tonight.
I could do the third, Monday night, I don't know if you can do that.
February third is okay with me.
I have seven questions here. So who's coordinating this?
Hey, so, if I can. So how it works is, we have money, and by we, I mean, town has money set aside for this. Usually, the business, which would be Jeff and the town, since they're people, they go and get the bread. There's the list of all the things, the breads, the peanut butter, the jelly, all of those things, you go and get it. We bring it to the ANW facility, we meet in the back there like we did last time, and we go ahead and do it, and then we pack everything up and we take it to the homeless shelter, is what we did last week.
I get that, but who's doing this side?
Oh.
Who's coordinating? Who's the point person for this?
Carrie, yeah, she is, she is. She's the one I talked to.
Okay, so is February third what we're going to do? Okay, so maybe, Jeff, can you communicate with Carrie to let her know?
I'll send something out to all of you.
Okay, thanks.
Six o'clock, February third?
Six.
It takes about, it took us about an hour and fifteen minutes.
And you were, how many of you were going?
Twenty, there was about twenty of us.
Yeah, okay. So, maybe you can let, let Jeff know how many of you are going and if you're bringing your spouse with you.
I'm two. I'm bringing two.
Okay? So, I know we will be two. You will be two also. Counselor Drew, I don't know if you will, yeah? Two. Counselor Brown?
I can be there.
Two.
If Counselor Berry reminds me.
One, for Counselor Berry.
I'm texting, I'll find out.
Brown, you bring in two. And Counselor Court?
I'm just texting right now, trying to work schedules. And plug in.
And then we'll invite staff as well, we have a number of staff.
Right, so right there, we probably already program thirteen hours. Okay? Thank you so much, Counselor.
Thirty and six? Yep.
Yeah. And as you know, that's a total, total volunteer thing, I mean, it's, it's on order. Seven, Mayor Cronin attended the AEM. Well, we have a meeting and I need your input.
I make a motion that we approve Mayor Cronin to attend the AEM, whatever, financial meeting, and the pay per day.
The two per day.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The rest, I'm taking it from my allowance. And I'm paying for it, for them. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you so much. Alright, let's move on. Recreation center discussion. So, I don't know who is discussing that. Counselor Salk, Counselor Brown, both of you, joint, or what is it?
He's in the mood.
He's in the mood. He's twenty below. Okay, go for it.
What number, what I have a number of?
Seven.
Seventy.
It's not on you, right?
No.
Okay.
There seems to be at least some hesitation on behalf of, I think primarily, members of administration that are responsible for recreation, whether or not this council is supporting the recreation center and the Florida public meeting. Now, I'll put it as straight as I can. I'm tired of talking about this. What I think we should do, what Counselor Brown thinks we should do, or any of us for that matter, what they think we should do with respect to this particular issue is irrelevant. It's what the rest of the community thinks we should do. So therefore, I think we need to proceed post-case with having a public meeting and getting the public's input and feedback on this. And then we can forward, put there.
Okay. That's your perspective. Tell me on, Counselor.
Counselor Brown's going to finish this off.
To add to that, I would say that both of the rec committees that I sit on were, Counsel, what Counselor Salk is saying is, their words exactly, is, they were thinking, March was kind of where we were thinking about doing this, because we wanted to do the open house and have a spec and answer questions, and, like, it's not a, here's exactly what we're doing, so if that scares you, that's not what we're saying. It's my understanding, we're having, our goal is to have an open house, to answer questions, to feel out, do you want a rec center? How engaged are you in this rec center? This is what we're thinking about having it. This is kind of a blueprint that we kind of like and we can see within our community. And, that's, I mean, that's what you all asked us to come up with, and we've done that, and now we want to stop talking about it and proceed to the public with it.
Alright, Counselor Court?
Well, you have costs and membership fees and everything available.
That's all part of it.
Alright.
So, that was Counselor Salk. I apologize for having had a face for a month. It's because I had a thought. I just wanted to know exactly that. The way you presented it, I didn't really get the vision of what you were bringing there. Are you bringing a concept? Are you bringing a capital cost? Are you bringing a maintenance cost and the impact on the taxpayer? That is... And so, I don't know how you're going to do so that we have fifteen hundred taxpayers in this town. And so, how do we, how do we get it there?
Okay, so the answer to that question is, we met with Jeff. Jeff broke it down for us, how much it would cost per taxpayer, per household. We have all of that information and we're bringing it. And of course, these are estimates, because we don't have, I mean, we haven't blocked the lumber yet. So everything, everything is estimated, but, and then we're, we need to attack this out in the community and get people coming. Our goal is to have a full house to this. Our goal, and this was brought up in one of the committees I sit on, is we want to make sure that we have, you know, soccer, all of baseball, softball, all of those people that are in gymnastics, all of those people that are in rec. We want you there, because we understand that that is a part of, a huge part of your life. And so if it's a huge part of your life, we want to hear from you. But at the same time, to answer all of the public questions that have been, that are hit up to us often, we want to have some answers. And we've done the homework with Jeff's help, and with speaking to the other Duchess Building and with those people, we have an idea of what we're looking at. So why not take it to the public and why not have their questions and be able to just put it out there and, like, stop spinning, because we're going backwards, we're not progressing, we're in our third year. We've been talking about this, let's get it done.
Alright, so I appreciate your clarification, thank you. Counselor Berry?
Historically, our public meetings have been trash. So, how long of a public meeting are you going to have? At what time are you going to have this public meeting? And I'm suggesting, it's only a suggestion, that maybe you look at taking the gymnasium downstairs and opening it up for a public meeting and a walk-in meeting. So that people at two o'clock in the afternoon, before they have their nap at six o'clock after soccer, can go to bed, they can walk into that gymnasium and they can get the information. So if you, if you go from two to, two to five, or two to six, and then you, you've got the majority of people, if they're, if they're interested, they're going to come. But to have a set time at night, it doesn't work.
Uh, Counselor Salk?
Okay. It hasn't worked in the past for land use bylaws and all those exciting things? Is that what you're saying? I just want to know.
Well, basically, it hasn't, Counselor, because I don't see, I don't see fifty people in the gallery.
Yeah? Let's see, I wouldn't be in the gallery either if I didn't, wasn't required to be here. But, we have to understand that this is something that the people have expressed the best interest in. And so if we need to send out flyers or mails or whatever, we need to do that, publicly advertise this, and make sure that we get it out there, that this is the meeting that affects everyone in this town, so therefore, we expect all of you to be there. And furthermore, if we're going to say that, well, we're going to answer all their questions, we're probably not. You know, if we're going to be able, if they're going to say, how much is this going to cost? We can't say definitively that it's going to cost you this many million dollars. And we can't say how much this is going, I don't know. Maybe the rec fairy comes down and drops a pot of gold on us.
Please.
Yeah, but people, people are taxpayers, right?
But we do have a ballpark.
That's a good point.
We have a ballpark. We didn't know how much the pool was going to cost. But they had a ballpark, and they went ahead and did it. We didn't know how much the soccer field was going to cost us. We had a ballpark, we had an open house, we had a full house, actually. It was packed with parents and kids for supporting it. And then it was just a thought, it was just a drawing on a piece of paper. We didn't have a hot clue what we were fully getting into, and how to the town. But, we had, we had an idea and we wanted to see where it would lead. That's what this is. This is an idea, we've done some homework, as per this council's request. We need to have an open house. I understand, I hear what you're saying, Counselor Berry, when you're saying having, you're talking about the seniors and being able to have a time for them. I have no problem having the seniors as part of this and working that into whatever's best. Fine with that. And the councils I sit on, when we discuss it, will come up with more lockdown, but we needed the support of this council. That's why it needed to be brought today to this council, because we want to get this done within the next month or two. That is our goal. Before summer starts, before we start losing people, it's winter, it's forty below, they're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
That's what I get.
I, I think that this is a project that people will get excited about. If not just interested, but I think you have to approach each of the various committees, right? Like you're saying? And, and there will be enough people in each of those areas that are going to show an interest in coming. And I, I think you could have a, a meeting with a full house. I, I, I think you can, but that's just my feeling, I think we should do it.
There is also another way for the seniors, they have a meeting every month.
Yes, I was going to suggest that maybe this committee, whoever it is, do a presentation at the seniors' apartment and ask them right there if they're interested.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, they need to have the facts, as much of the facts as you can provide, Counselor Salk.
My last comment. I just don't want to sit on my hands, looking at my belly button for another two months. Why can't we have these things?
I agree.
I just want to get this done. I'm tired of talking about you.
Well, okay, you, you're raising a point of interest.
So now that we're all off our hands, if, do we need to make a motion so that we can do this? But tell me that, I'm not familiar, can you just?
Yeah, you have it in your planning session.
I know. So, so I guess, can we, can Counselor Salk, can I progress?
You just direct administration to prepare a full house.
So can you trust the Counselor Salk and I will make that?
You call up the committee and assign them.
That's what we need. Perfect, we will give you a date as soon as we can work that out. Thank you.
Thank you. It needs to be discussed seriously, because it, it will impact every taxpayer. And sometime we won't allow it, and sometime we need to feel things. Alright, so here is seven F, business arising from delegations. Seven five one, Stars. So, in the past, we gave Stars a dollar per capita, and at this point, as you heard last time, they asked us for two dollar per capita, and at that point, we felt it was a little heavy with all else we were doing. We're talking how you have to decide as a council if we raise it up, or if we do half time better, or if we leave it at this level, yes?
So is that dollar per capita in our budget, correct?
So.
They should do, it must be double.
Okay, so this is for operational, this, this grant, if we, if you do it, this is for operational work. What about the landing pad?
Okay.
How far as I can go?
Okay, now, the landing pad is a different story altogether, because when we looked at it, it was, it was over a hundred thousand dollar redo, and honestly, we did not have that in a, in a, in a budget. And they are using beer for this point.
Even what they are in the air.
Really, they have different way to land at the site of an accident, if there is an accident. They can have the AC and P close the road and they can land. So it's not that they cannot do it, it's that it's not preferable landing.
Yeah.
I think with all of the cutbacks and everything that's been happening, I think we budgeted for the dollar. I think, I feel it's worth the dollar. I'm all behind Stars ambulance, but I also know what our pockets look like, and we're starting to look at some populant. So I feel like we just need to behave ourselves and stick with the one dollar.
So, what we need, what we will need to do is, when the next budget is being discussed, to decide what else we do.
Yes. I concur with Counselor Brown, because we've cut back and cut back. We came way back from the original grant budget, and it's, it's a tight budget.
Six hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, and so, we, we just can't pull money out of the air. If we got it.
Alright, so, administration, the amount that is in the budget is what it is. Alright? So, under seven, seven G?
Yep.
Brownlee. So here you have the Brownlee description of the, the seminar. It is not the one that is the best, the best seminar I have seen. I've seen some really exciting one, but this one, I personally don't see much. The code of conduct is already in place for us. Judicial review, the mitigating, I'm not so sure where we're going with that.
There's a question about that here.
Go ahead.
Is it also for the arbitration?
I don't think so. I think, now again, it's a very, very...
It's a very good question.
Yeah, I don't think so. Because I think what they're meaning there is if you have quasi judicial boards, like your assessment review board, is a good example.
That's what we're doing, yes.
And someone chooses to, chooses to litigate against the assessment review board, or they can ask a judge to review the decision of an assessment review board. I think that's where this is headed. Now, again, that's all we have, that, I don't have any more robust description than that.
That is where it's going.
Yeah. Which is a pretty rare occurrence for us.
Environmental compliance, well, we're doing our best every time we have a project to be environmentally compliant.
Protecting the cows and the creek.
We, we are, and honestly, pass us a lot of money to protect them. And here in review, well, those are cases that happen, but in general, they're really, very often deal with a large centers that have a lot of judicial legal issues. So, personally, I'm... So, personally, this year, I wouldn't be choosing to go there. But if some of you feel like you want to go ahead, use your professional development money and go for it. Anybody has any print this year?
I just need another way to register if anyone wants to go.
Yeah, because we need to register for it. Anyways, I don't see too much appetite this year. I mean, in general, we really love going there. It's normally really, really good, but this year is a little bit...
I need to speak comment.
Yes.
When I went down this list, the first thing on the list, we haven't had an issue with. Second thing, we've gone through that. Jeff presented it very well to us and we are already in compliance with that. Judicial reviews, we haven't had a big issue with litigating and those kind of things. I mean, we got the one, the sewer treatment thing, that's about it. We're on top of that. Environmental compliance, I look at that and I see, I see larger centers having problems with that. And I, I don't think we've had a big issue with environmental problems.
Redd was going to speak up.
Pardon me? If Redd was there, I'd be there. I want to, I want to be able to...
All right, so I don't see, I don't see...
I love going there, but I can't see spending the money, go to this.
I really, personally, I don't see it myself either.
But if I was to go at all, the only thing I'd be going for is a barefoot. Because that is a good part, but I, we miss out on all the other stuff.
I made your recommendation that we overlook the Brownlee conference this year. Just leave the no motion as...
No, just a recommendation.
I just wanted to mention, RMRF announced theirs as well.
That's the one I've been thinking.
Well, but it's even more administrative. So, I'll just tell you the topics. Municipal authority on reserved lands, so not reservation lands, but municipal reserved lands. The recovery of taxes related to land, foot pitfalls, and policing with community peace officers. I actually think I'll send someone from administration to this one, but it didn't seem like a real governance-focused session, so. I, I had something depending, have you booked it, right, during reading week? So, I don't know if I'll get it. I'd like to go to it, but I got to see if the family's planning anything, so we'll see on that. But it's a very administrative-focused session for sure.
They've had lots of better issues to deal with over the years. This year's not focused there to be interested.
All right, thank you, counselors. I mean, I really encourage professional development for all of us, but one is really going to be something that's not as pertaining to our work, maybe not. A committee and other reports. A, A, you have a peace officer report. And as you could see, there is one item where he talks about a new year is... Item. It's an unfortunate story. Everybody was safe, but it was not pretty.
Can I ask where, where do we sit with his authorization?
Oh, everything's here, done.
It's, it's done?
Yeah, we've been for a month.
Okay.
So, as you can see, it does with a lot of animal control. And that's an ongoing issue in our town. I don't know how we manage to have that many dogs on the woods, but we do.
I actually have a question on that. It says 10 animal control investigations. So, does that mean dog pickups? Like they're going in, they're getting the dogs that are on the main street?
Oh, depends.
I'm just speaking. Because it just says 10 animal control investigations.
Normally, those are complaints that he would go respond to. And we've had a few of those too.
So, does it say anywhere that there's dogs up? Or there's a pile right there?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we've picked up a lot of fact. I, I visited with Sean on last Wednesday, kind of midway through probation. He said he's picked up more dogs in his three months here than he has in his entire career before this. So, we're running probably weekly to a shelter with animals.
Good to hear.
Yeah, I would say probably every week we take, we find someone or we meet someone that can take some animals. It's, this time of year is busy because it gets cold and then they're all looking for something, really busy. But there's no shortage.
Thank you. Okay, so you have the November 2019 financial statement. As you can see, we're pretty close to what we had budgeted. We're really in good shape here. There are, there are some taxes that still need to be collected, but it has been for the past nine years about a similar amount. We were more in a 70, 80,000 in the rear. This year, we're a little bit higher, but they have collected some since, in that time. Yes, go ahead.
So, Jeff, I've heard of the golf course revenue. It says 465,962. Is that... So, that's the final, that's the ultimate, that's the end of that. And so, the expenses for the same category were 475,38?
That would not include in that our capital payment.
That's my thought.
Yeah. No, it'd go to a different account.
Yeah.
So, it's that plus the capital.
But in essence, it would be... Actually, I was really pleased before that came in operation because we budgeted about operational loss. We were budgeting by, I think, 65,000 and we shouldn't be under 20.
So, which is really awesome considering that we did an in-house job.
But we've got, like I said, we've got a big capital payment to make at the end of the year.
Yeah, this is something.
But we've budgeted for it. It's not a non in yet. I'll look at that a little closer, but I think, I think we're going to be ending falling at about 20. Want to ask the guys to look at that for me?
And if we consider that we had a real, you know, fourth spring.
Late, late spring.
Fourth spring, yeah, fourth of August.
All right, so that's good. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, my question was in regards to the pool. So, in the pool, it said our full budget was about, sorry?
No.
Uh, it said our pool...
Counselor?
So, I'm just, so, pool was $100,000.
Yes.
And in actual, it says it was...
223. 93.
93, thank you. So, so we were under?
We took in less revenues when we budgeted at the pool. You're on the revenue side now. The only thing I can look at quick is we were also 10,000 under in expenses. Okay, so we tried to balance that with lower revenues. So, we budgeted 220 in expense now. We may, we may get close to that because we're going to have utility bills for December. We should still be a few thousand under in expenses.
But not bad considering the weather, our everything.
Yeah, not bad.
Jeff, I've asked this before, why do we keep the pool lit so much through here?
Part of it's because the windy city gym uses the upstairs.
Oh, they use the upstairs?
Yeah, there's washrooms and lockers and everything upstairs that they access 24/7.
Okay, so the outside area could use it now.
Well, it's because we have surveillance cameras on it. And so, they're all LED lights and we have it all under surveillance and we don't get a good picture if it's having to use the infrared.
So, they're going to jump the fence and the lights.
We've, we have people in the pool area. Now, we have people chuck glass in there quite a bit, rocks, climb in, mess around. We had somebody shoot a golf ball through the water slide. So, they teed it up at Lions Park and shot golf balls at water slides.
Did you share? Just recently?
Yeah.
Did you catch it?
No, no, they were out in the ball, down at Lions Park. We fixed it. Yeah, so we keep it lit up for security reasons.
Okay, thank you. A, C, development report, as you can see, so it's a little bit more activity this year in comparison to last year.
Can we ask a question? What's your $40 emergency? Yes. Solar field. Ah. I knew that question was coming. It's our permit.
All right, so this brings us exactly at the time where we want for dinner, so...
Do you, and you may not, do you want to finish correspondence and then you'll go into the court session?
Sure, absolutely. Are you fine with that? Good.
Please.
All right, so tell us, is holiday wishes. Community foundation are blessed, which as you know, we managed to get a grant from them and that was very nice. We also managed to get another grant, a call from the culture, Alberta culture.
With these grants, Jeff, where does this sit as financially?
That's everything so far. So, we are $21,000 into a $90,000 project.
So, it's a beginning. We have a quarter, the rest should be coming up to them. So, we have a letter from Minister Casey Madu, two letters actually. One, it has to do with the renter war. And the other one has to do with the tax assessment changes. There will be now provincial assesses, they will assess all those different categories. Then there is Alberta Health Service. So, they just to let us know that they're going to review all the contracts for the helicopter services. So, they're going to review all that. I don't really know if they wanted any more than what Mayas and Reeves have done and AGMA and ASPM have done quite a bit. Yes, been done. And under F or RTRs, yes, go ahead.
I have a question in regards to the, yeah, the skinny rate, the money that was, we got 24,000-ish.
Well, this is one that I'm going to talk about.
Right.
So, that is a grant to return first.
I understand.
He just wants to open it.
No, yes. And so, I know that the floor mats are $60,000 and, you know, this is super 24, because that's not 60. So, I'm just wondering where we're at with that.
Sure. Um, I, it's the one, I bring up 100 documents, that's the one I forgot to bring. I believe that we were funding the mats through partial taxation and partial recreation reserves from the taxation last year. So, you reserved a couple hundred thousand dollars last year. We have asked Minor Hockey and Skating Club to give us a definite commitment, dollar commitment so we know. But you had it actually fully funded in your budget without considering this grant. So, that will free up probably reserves when we do the middle rate budgets.
So, part of my question then was, I understand we did that and I'm all for spending good hard taxpayer money, but when we get the 24,000 here and the skaters, all of them, hockey and, you know, all of that little package, they wanted to help and fundraise, but I haven't heard anything and we're right in the heat of it, so I'm wondering if we need like a...
No, we've engaged them in the last couple of weeks. I talked to one of the board members last week and just said, we need you to tell us where you're at here because, I said, you guys brought it up. You started this thing. Council agreed to fund it and then you've gone quiet.
Right.
So, they are to be giving us, like I said, a definitive number of where they will participate financially.
Because I understand it's in the budget, but I would rather not spend taxpayer money if we can, you know, take it out of their pocket instead.
But Jeff, I really want you to congratulate your staff member who really took the time.
Yeah, this was Anthony's foray into groundwriting, so he's excited as it came through.
So, it's rather amazing.
Custodian here?
Anthony's our custodian and Anthony has gone outside of the ranch of work at the town and decided he could help the town. So, I thought that was awesome.
Was that the chocolates on my table you brought for him?
Yes.
Okay. I saw that when I went in. I thought, that's nice. You know, I'm pleased we've, you, you've seen, we've got a number of competitive grants. They're not huge, but they're something.
Okay.
So, the one, the grant for the intern, have you put out for proposals yet?
So, until March, what happens is we're an approved post. Now, they put out and gather all the interested interns, potential interns, and then they send us a list of everyone that would like to be interviewed by us. So, we don't get that until, I believe, March 1st.
All right.
That's great that we got that.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
We need a motion to recess?
I make a motion to recess for, I don't know, an hour?
20 minutes?
20 minutes.
Whenever.
18 minutes? Well, if you want to eat while we're going in the session, so do you.
10 minutes.
So, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you so much, Jerome. We're amazing today and you have to do that all the time. You're doing good.